The first item on our agenda today is the improvements in January sixteenth, two thousand and five. Chair, maintain the motion to approve those. The move on commission of Petrie consecutive. Second, I'm sure there's any changes or amendments to the minutes, Chair.
I didn't see it.
No. Okay. Not hearing you all of the favor of talking, getting that same guy.
All right.
Those opposed, which unanimous. I didn't do was to approve and sign the thing contract. And this is the contract we revised around last week.
There's so many awarded, Mr. Chairman.
Right.
Uh, what we did is, um, uh, as we do with all our contracts, send it to Primex for legal review.
Yep.
They made a couple of changes, um, and the vendor agreed.
Okay.
Right, Douggy?
Yeah. Yeah, it was bringing all the changes.
There were changes, alright.
Yeah, we did award us already, so.
You did, but we didn't have a, we didn't have a, we had the pricing, but not the contract.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, we always send the contracts for legal reviews.
Okay.
So why don't we, we'll have to hold this first, yeah, well, we'll sign it inside the office.
Okay.
Alright. Yeah, Chair, if you have any other questions on that, do you?
No.
Well, okay, let's talk about the roof replacement now with Hydra. So. Yes, I've done it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good afternoon, everybody. We, uh, went over the bidders with a fine tooth comb, starting with the lowest bid. Uh, the lowest bid was dairy roofing. They submitted an incomplete bid. There was a lot of information that was missing. Uh, so we went with the next bid up, which was JB Roofing. Uh, we looked into JB Roofing and we selected them because of their completeness of the RFP submission. They had everything down to even the name brand of the shingles that they're going to use. Uh, I started contacting their references, um, and I attached sheets there with the folks that I spoke to for the references, and they had stellar references. Nothing but good things to say and, you know, positive, very positive about that company.
Okay. You recommending them? What was he, uh? Uh, was JJ, this JJS University saying that?
They were, they were higher on the material equipment costs. We had separated the, uh, RFP out, uh, as a just in case scenario. So they stripped the shingles off and then found out we needed to have decking or trim replaced. So I wanted a, a cost upfront, just so there wasn't any surprises. And they were about twice as much as JB was for the trim replacement and the decking.
Oh, okay.
The other thing is, Mr. Chairman, there, there was a number of vendors here when we opened the bids. And a couple of the vendors commented that these lower bids, they'd be paying more for shingles than, than what the bids were. So it certainly made us question, you know, very carefully.
They lowball, they lowball it, and once they get in, they say, oh, yeah.
Well, that's kind of what we were afraid of. Uh, so we wanted to make sure that, uh, we'd gotten complete bids.
Sure. I feel confident with the, uh, reviews that we got from the different types of, uh, and I made sure that the reviews were shingle style and not commercial rubber roofs, you know, looking for reviews at time.
Yep.
So it's a good, it's a good positive feedback.
What's the warranty on the shingles?
Thirty year warranty on the shingles. Um, that is a, uh, GAF, uh, is the manufacturer of the shingles.
Yeah.
Yeah, reaching out to a couple of other folks in the industry, uh, they said that that's probably the best shingles we're gonna be able to buy for there right now.
There was a big, there was a big change in the shingle market here.
Here it is. Consolidation.
They weren't warranting them.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I was, well, I did, I knew that something happened a little while back.
Along the same time that they had, uh, um, they went from three tap to architectural shingles. Right. That's when everybody started switching over to architectural shingles.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So have you ever looked at a metal roof?
Uh, we, uh, we decided not to go with the metal roof because of the noise during rain.
Hmm.
It's a hospice facility.
Hospice facility. I think they're three times more to, cause I had them.
Wow, it's, you know, which, they're good for a lot of years.
Really?
You know? Our experience with the metal roof, uh, Commissioner, has been that the metal roof itself is durable. Uh, the fasteners tend to fail, especially in this environment. They get hydraulic by the ice and they.
You have to maintain it.
Right.
I, I used to sell steel buildings. I got a good idea, uh, what happens.
Yeah. Oh. Alright, well, Chair, maintain the motion to award, based on the recommendation of staff to award the Hydra roof to BB Roofing Systems. Are you gonna take it, accept the motion, do that? Okay, you're gonna move.
I'll start again.
A second, okay. Any further discussion there? Um, not hearing any. All is in favor of the motion, uh, indicate by saying aye.
Alright.
Those opposed, okay, the motion ends. Award definitely JB Roofing Systems, okay? Talk about the Wonder God, Wonder God installation of, of Ostriches.
My numbers are wrong, Mr. Chairman. Douggy will come give you the correct numbers. It's still under what we've appropriated.
Yeah, we put eighty thousand on the budget, right, the capital budget?
That's correct, that's correct, Mr. Chairman. Uh, our original bid, uh, which was the low bid from November of two thousand and twenty-two is with Stanley Healthcare. That is the technology that we want. We want Bluetooth with no radio interference. They came in at seventy-four thousand and change. Um, they came back with a revised bid now of ninety thousand even. So, uh, the crew and myself took a good look at the quote that they had and went over it to see where we could shave some money off it. We're taking the initial stock order of wrist bracelets, putting that on nursing's budget. That's going to be supplied for nursing. And they wanted to charge us for, um, door mag locks, which we already have, and it's the model that, uh, they spec in that system. So at a thousand dollars a piece, I removed those and we're down to sixty-nine thousand, which is lower than the original bid. Sales might speak to city, have no issue, uh, providing warranty for the rest of the system if we reuse those.
Okay. So we got sixty-seven, I think.
Correct.
Okay. Well, we need it, that's for sure. I think rest of, rest of folks in over there, you know, some of them.
Yeah, there's a definite need, yeah.
We almost lost one the other day, so.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, motion to approve. It's an order of the second, second. Okay, any further discussion regarding the Wonder God program? Now, hearing all those in favor of adoption, same aye.
Alright.
Those opposed, which unanimous.
Could I ask a quick question, Mr. Chairman? Um, Douggy, any idea of the timing?
I'll call them tomorrow.
Okay, so, and you can let me know?
Yeah.
Okay. That'd be great, cause there, I know the staff was really afraid when, I mean, we caught the lady as she was going out the door, but, you know, it's, it's, it's hard, because, you know, the nurses station, you can't, if you're at the nurses station, you can't see that way.
Hmm.
And, and that leads to the front door, plus some of the, some of the rooms have doors to the outside. And so we haven't been taking people that wander, but, uh, we needed, when we first brought this lady in, she was not wandering. Uh, but then she began to wander and, and, uh, you know.
Yeah. If, uh, if I could just add, uh, an important distinction about this system that we're getting is that this system, uh, is only activating the lock on the door when the resident wearing the wrist bracelet approaches the door. So all doors remain functional and all doors remain fire code acceptable. Doors function normally until the resident with the wrist bracelet, uh, approaches the door, correct?
That's cool. Big, that's awesome. Alright, so we're against, we're on seven, four, and we move right in five, which is, we got Paul here to talk about the pen test tool. Regarding all of our hackers. Yeah. God, how many, how many history we got, I wonder. Paul, you got any idea?
Um, yes. And actually, it's in here in old Google.
Okay, great.
Bringing everyone.
I know, it's like, some state of grade the number. And.
Sorry, I choose through this line, Chair.
It's alright. Okay.
So after our attack, when Homeland.
We talked about this back.
Right, well, back in, Homeland Security came in, they did an audit, and that front page, this is what they proposed, where they were gonna do the assessment for us, then they were gonna provide us tools, and then there were all these memberships that we could get involved in. One of them is that, on there, that MSI, ISAC membership.
ISAC, yeah.
And that looks at all this malicious stuff coming in. We get a weekly report. So on page two, this is what I get every week, every Monday. There's a bunch of IPs, and all of this is just a few that I pulled out of the domains that are considered malicious. There was a total of fifteen hundred and sixty. That's what that number is, and I just pulled a few, just to kind of show you some of the stuff where people click. We have things like the California Fire, TikTok, Red Edit, which you see all over that when you hit things, USPS. So.
Wet transfer and.
I, well, they used another T. There is a Wii transfer, which is large file transfer, which is a big thing. So they just put a little letter, or they put these little things and people.
And they hope you just, they hope when you're not looking.
So for us to secure that, we would have to put all of that into our firewall every week. We don't have the staff that could ever do that, and we'll, could the firewall hold it? So they then provide us with this, um, on page three, which is the malicious domain blocking.
Yeah.
They take all that information and they put it into their server. And we point out with DNS, which I went over before, it takes where you wanna go, TikTok, and it gives it an IP address. It takes that, so a user clicks and he wants to go to TikTok, it, it goes to that server and says, no, this one was malicious. It sends it right back and sends to the user, site's unavailable. And so the user never gets to go to the site to click on things that are potentially bad. Down below is also, we get that weekly. There was, um, what we got, four thousand spam or malware sites.
Yeah.
We're done. And down below of that, we have, um, three hundred and fifty that were critical, that are severe infections, should they have clicked it. Well, to, I, I didn't get this in there, but I did pull it up because of your, like, your question. We also get, this is the total, so during the week, we're four, four million, seven hundred thousand clicks out of this county. It gives us a little of that, we have this. So we're lower, less than one percent. But it also gives us a graph of the, this is just the usage, and it follows the days of the week. But it also lets me know if I came in on Monday and this one's way up here, there's a problem. Somebody's already attacked our system and is in there. So these tools, they were just free because we had them get involved to help us.
Right, my, my, we were there to sort of ask, and anyone could definitely.
The, uh.
Security.
And the next page, that was all the stuff of us going out. We also have, where they do a vulnerability scan, they scan coming in, and they, we get a report every week. Uh, they look for any server that has an open port, and then they look at that server and see if there are any vulnerabilities, and they send that to us every week, so that we can deal with it. Um, and then in short, the other piece that they give us on the next page is the CIS controls. I just gave a, again, a, just a little blur, just so you can see kind of what they do. These are like little controls, they say, to do. There are three boxes on the side. Um, the first one is green, and it was orange and the blue. But, so they say, try and hit these and secure your network. So they give us a tool that we run it against our own network. It provides a printout of all the things that we didn't hit, so that we can then address those. Just systematically try and tighten things up. Um, and the one example was obviously like the passwords down below. I could probably remember, and that was put out, but that was one of the things that came to them, that our passwords were weak. The other piece is a tool, or tools out there, the very last one. This is our, uh, website, is, this was a pen test tool against our website, and we came out low. It's not the most robust, but we didn't see any big issues, so.
Well, that's good.
Aaron's doing well, keeping that tight, so. But there is a whole report, which I did send to Aaron, so he could look at the little things if he wanted to take it.
So I guess, for purpose, I, I asked Paul to come in, yeah, just to kind of give you guys an update as to where we were, uh, and what we, what he's been able to accomplish, um, pretty much alone. I mean, he does that, somebody that works with him, but, uh, about keeping, I mean, the, the type of data that we have available, I mean, all of our residents, all of our inmates, social security numbers of all, all their health records and, and all those things that would be.
Well, access, access to, you know, payroll, you got, you got, you know, they could.
Payables and.
I mean, I can't see this name, they can clean you out, clean out our employees. A lot of folks have direct deposit to banks, they have paychecks.
And they still try and do that on occasion, right? They'll send Diane or somebody an email.
The one I, and I should have sent it to you, I deleted it. I've gotten it twice, and it is very clever, because it looks like Ray sent an email to this vendor stating, yes, please send this invoice to Diane Legere at so-and-so. It was for, um, an invoice for thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars for strategy buildings. And, uh, so I deleted it, and I got another one, um, and there's a copy of an invoice. It, it, I mean, if you look at it, you would think that there's a whole email chain between Ray and this individual. Um, you know, and you, I, I looked at that, it's like, there's no way he would have engaged in something like this.
That's so clever. I think that's why Director of FBI said, either you've been hacked, or you don't know you've been hacked yet.
Yeah. I remember, I remember last few years back, they took us, they took the county seal and sent an email out to a bunch of people in the county that they had hacked, saying that, from me, saying that I was having fun to help the elderly and everything else, and they had it all laid out. I went out to get a sandwich, and the gal had given a hundred and fifty dollars to it, and they cleaned her, they cleaned her bank account up.
Well, one of the most worrisome ones are the ones that Jill gets, and she'll get an email from, the last one was from Joe McGivern, and it's stating that I want to change my direct deposit, um, and, um, to change it to this. Well, we don't do that via email. Somebody, if they want to change their direct deposit, they have to come in, fill out a form and sign it. We don't do that over, and, uh, because you, we made that change, his pay would go to whomever.
Whoever they.
Okay, and we always pre-noted an account too, and send a test transaction and then get it back, that it's all been verified as well. But this is crazy, and it looks so legitimate, you, you know, you just would feel awful if you missed that, those little signs.
That's where I get all those emails from the feds, you know, I always forward them to you, because I, we, we, we get seven or eight a day.
Yeah, and they're all scams, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, but that's all encrypted, that, anything to do with feds is encrypted, uh, special, because.
Well, we always look for dot gov, you know, at the end of, um, an email address, and most of those are all kinds of different things, yeah.
So Ray and I had a conversation earlier about the dot gov whole program, Paul, and it apparently.
Well, I spoke with them today, cause I was concerned, it's been taken so long.
Right.
They have certain amount of staff and money to deal with that. So we're a big project to them, big county. And a lot of it is they're dealing with just small little departments, small schools. They're using Gmail accounts or this sort of account, so.
So they're trying to clean up, you guys.
They can spend less money, less hours, and deal with the little guys. I think they're looking that they would like to see us move towards the cloud, the three sixty-five. So they're gonna look at state bidding, at least kind of give us a idea, what would that pricing be with the state bid? And supposedly, they have some, uh, good pricing through Dell to deal with that. You know, when they deal, done with it.
So it's still a work in progress.
But I have a number to the director, uh, deputy director, so I can keep after it.
Yeah, okay. Alright. Well, that'll be good when that happens, at least there'll be a, a bunch of lines of security, cyber security is built into that.
Right, and people would trust us, like Diane, so she's looking for that dot gov.
Mm-hmm.
That's, yeah.
Usually if it doesn't have the dot gov, it gets deleted right away, yeah.
So. This is where we sit now, where are we heading? I mean, that's.
We're tightening up.
Tightening things up.
Tightening things up, doing these controls, we'll work on this dot gov, and we're putting, um, you know, things in place to try and bring the cybersecurity together.
Yeah.
So it's almost like, you know, we're, it's a dog chasing its tail in some respects, because no matter, the first thing you tighten up, then something else.
Yeah, pops up.
Something else pops up, and then we're, you know, chasing that, so.
Yeah.
Uh, hackers are pretty smart.
Yeah, I think they have a capital punishment for those, some of the people. I admire, excuse my language.
You never find them, they're not in our country.
I know, they're not in our country, but you see.
It's, you're going through some of the training, the tools that these hackers have. Um, cyber people in cyber are trying to use the same tools. You can get so much from a site, you just plug in a website, like ours, and you could find any little hole and then infiltrate that. We had a gentleman in custody, in federal, in federal custody, um, who, he was charged with espionage, and, like, he hacked into the DOD mainframe. And, uh, he said it was much easier than he anticipated. It, they just, people think about it in, in ways that are beyond my capability. And, you know, like it, like you said, they, you find something, a patch for a problem, and they find another place to exploit it. Well, just to bring to light on that, one workstation, if someone clicks the wrong thing and someone gets into that workstation, let's say Diane's workstation, Diane's administrator, that's station, they can look and see everyone that logged into that with credentials. So the county administrator was logged into that, they can get those credentials and now go everywhere.
Which is why I don't, which is why I don't have any credentials for any bank accounts or, or.
Yeah.
I don't have any passwords that puts me into payroll or payables. I, I, I have none of those things.
Well, banking, there's dual authentication, and most of, like, any of our access to, like, the US Treasury, well, we'll see where that lay lies. That's another, uh, but, you know, there's a, a lot of dual authentication now with, uh.
There's supposed to be some, there was more of that facial recognition stuff. Remember I had to come in that time, sitting in front of a camera, and I'm like.
It's one of the worst experiences in all my years of working here. I saw my avatar and all my crow's feet and everything, like, right before my eyes, like, this is awful. It's like, you can, you know, because I, I upload to the IRS and social security, all of that, I mean, Ray and I, and Ray is, in many cases, you're the, um, you're the administrator, I'm the, you know, we do that. We have to upload our license, our, um, the, um, adjusted gross income of our tax returns. We have no secrets, and of course, it's the IRS, you know, so in order to gain access, there's, there's a lot of information, or the US Treasury. And, uh, you know, we, we don't have any secrets.
No, there's no privacy for any of our stuff.
They could, they have all the information on me, that's for sure, and Ray at this point, so. But it's like, okay, bank accounts, you know, all that, but the wrinkles, no, that's where I dropped the line.
But no, you know, and that's why it's never smart for you.
George had to go through that.
It's never smart to the administrator, you have, you know, all those passwords, and, and I don't know.
It took us like half a day or something, we listened, it's like, sit here and do this.
That was for US Treasury and for ARPA.
For ARPA, yeah.
Yeah, to access that, yeah. That was not easy.
That's why I got paid the big bucks. Anyway. Well, Paul, thanks for that update, I really appreciate it. I know it's a lot of work.
Thank you, Paul.
God bless you. We're lucky to have you, because I don't know what we'd be doing with all this stuff, you know? It's all expertise. You gain all the many years of being you guys' industry, like Justin, same way. You spend a lot of time in the industry, so you learn stuff, yeah?
You learn stuff, but it doesn't mean you're out of the woods, and you just never know when someone's gonna outsmart you.
Yeah, really. Well, thanks for the update. You guys have any more questions for Paul? No question, huh? Alrighty, item six, uh, just put on the agenda as a result of President Trump's order. However, that, he's reversed his order, so. Let's, we can pull this item off the agenda, but he has a.
Well, the only, the only thing is, I, I guess I did want you all to know what was at risk. So I did have Diane was time enough to do a report on all of those items that, that he did order frozen, and, and what, um.
Well, it's good for us.
I'd like to say I was somewhat involved, but really Diane did all the work, because.
Portions of it may survive, portions of it may not survive, we don't know.
Well, actually, I mean, that, the, the ECBG, um, money, um, that's where it began. And this, this began last Thursday, actually, um, before any of this, and that's why that made the agenda on Monday. You know, it sent out the agenda, and then Monday night happened, and, you know, everything went crazy. So it was last Thursday, we received, um, an email from the National Energy Something Lab. They're our contractor for the technical assistance for our solar project. And Kevin there sent us an email that, at this point, that project was going to be put on hold. And so I asked, it's like, do you have any timeline? Can we, uh, Ray asked me to, um, find out, you know, how much of our technical assistance has been used? And if we were willing to, let's say, fund it ourselves, how much? He says, I have no details for you whatsoever. So it began last Thursday, and Ray and I were joking, it's like, okay, this is casualty number one, you know? So then Monday night occurred, so Saturday, um, yeah, Monday night occurred with that headline. And so Tuesday morning, um, I mean, to, basically spent most of Tuesday and a good part of this morning on the phone and emails and stuff back and forth. So, um, we started getting the emails from the federal government with regards to our seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollar COGS grant. Um, and, um, so I contacted Elizabeth McKenna at, um, Senator Shaheen's office, uh, because that was congressually, congressionally directed spending from her office. Um, she got back to me today that she was CCing some other people in, but Sheriff Mull had reached out to Chris Scott there, and Chris, um, stated that we have very little information. We read, reached out to our, you know, Senator Shaheen's reached out to her federal partners and whatnot, and, um, they asked if, um, Senator Shaheen could use our, um, inquiry about this grant in her pitch to try to work something out. So that's where that was left. Um, then there's, uh, so that's seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for a COGS grant. Um, reached out to Tom Broderick, uh, on Tuesday at Gopher for our, because of our one point four million dollar, um, funding for the roof project. Uh, he got, he called me back this morning, uh, before e- everything got rescinded, and said, most likely, he feels that that money was safe, because it was ARPA money, we had it obligated. Um, be, and because ARPA money, they already have in hand. But he said, I can't make any guarantees, one hundred percent. And he says, we're in constant contact, um, you know, with the feds, and they promised any updates, they would let us, let us know. Uh, then reached out to the New Hampshire DOJ, uh, because we have CA, our CAC grants. We have two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars remaining on that one of the grants, and then we have, uh, yeah, we have two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars remaining on that, and then also our DV Unit Prosecutor Grant, where we have thirty thousand dollars. The director called me, um, and stated, you know, we got this information, there, again, the same story, no information about this. We've reached out to our federal partners, um, right now, we're unable to, as of five o'clock in the afternoon, we will not be able to draw down on any money. So, and that is money that the state doesn't have, they draw down as we spend it. So she also said that, uh, she had spoken to Maggie Hassan's office that, um, on Tuesday, and that these government, government programs, and I guess most of them, but like VOKA and VALA, each of those programs was going to, was asked to submit a fifty-page document justifying, uh, on the federal level, their program, by February tenth. So that's where things were at there. I had also reached out to Robert. I had also reached out to Robert Waters at the Cold Weather Shelter Program because we had a hundred thousand dollars there. And he didn't know anything. He says, I'll get back to you if I get any status update. And then this morning, I reached out to the CDFA about our CDBG grant that we have a public hearing on. We still have four, four hundred and thirty thousand dollars outstanding with that. We have seventy-six thousand dollars in the pipeline that we requested to reimburse um contractors. Um they said that they had reached out to HUD and they had very little information at this point as well. So when you look at all that funding, it totals three mil, over three million dollars that we had at stake. And that's just our little county. The, the common theme with all of this is, first of all, I was really grateful that everybody not only emailed us, but they also called us as well to um, you know, uh express that they were doing everything they could to get answers and that they would follow up with any updates. So I I really appreciated that. Um and that, it had been crazy for them. They had been inundated with phone calls and emails. It was just absolutely crazy. Uh and they had, they got the notice very, it was very last minute and there was very little information that went along with it. Um the other things that occurred was we were getting ready to apply for um a couple of grants. Carrie Conway is working on uh through the National Institute of Justice and the um DOJ, the BGA, Bureau of Justice Assistance um to uh submit some applications. And we had received um emails from them that they removed all of their postings for all funding opportunities. And then today, you know, fortunately, you know, we did get the um you know, saw the news story that all of this had been rescinded. Um so that's kind of what happened with Stratford County and all of this.
Well, it's obvious that we're gonna go through some. It's apparent that they're gonna go through some of this stuff and eliminate some eventually. We just don't know which piece and which part.
The only one I've heard back after the rescinding of um this memo um is the um New Hampshire Department DOJ stated that it was business as usual. I don't know if the others are still trying to figure out what's going on. I don't know. But I did hear back from the New Hampshire DOJ, they were working business as usual, so.
Figures to smallest amount of money.
Yeah, yeah. But I'll follow up with, I'll follow up with the others.
Well, thank you for doing all that work there. And I know it was a lot of work, you know. On the fight, what our status was with all those different programs, so.
A lot of, a lot of entities were in the same boat.
Yeah, for sure. But we'll see what, we'll see what the president does and what the Congress does. I mean, it's gonna be an interesting time. For sure, in the next few months. Um so is, is Donna coming in for this hearing?
Yes, five o'clock. And I believe Cora Hop from Rochester Childcare is coming in to give you. It's required. We're about, we're approaching about the half.
Halfway mark.
Halfway point. Yeah, like I said, we have, it's a six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar CDBG grant. It's a pass through to Rochester Childcare. Um we are just about at the halfway. Like I said, we have seventy-six thousand dollars that we um submitted for a drawdown we have yet to get. But so we're, the, the, we have to pay a couple of contractors for their work and yeah, she'll be here.
She'll take it a while. As I was up there probably two years ago.
Yeah, she'd be the one to have, yeah.
I'll hold my questions for her then.
Yeah, she'll have all the details.
Um do we have any other old and new business we want to talk about before we, I'll probably end up just recessing the meeting. Uh commissions meeting until five, because we've got a hearing on this CDBG grant. Do you guys have any old and new business you want to talk about? Well, Ray, um one thing I wanted to bring up uh was respite, respite care, generally speaking. I know we're offering it. Um outside these, outside of the one, the folks that wander uh that we weren't, we weren't able to take. Is there anybody else that's in the healthcare system that wouldn't require respite that we would, we would be unable to?
No, I mean, it, it, it it, it just would depend on how full we were, you know, at, at, at the, at the minute of the request. We had we always try and reserve a bed or two for, you know, the people that are actually dying. Right. You know, as our, uh, it's just, I'm not sure that I can answer, but if you guys remember, I had Julie come in a, a couple of meetings or a meeting or two ago and explained that our pharmacy was concerned because we're using a much larger number you know, a volume of certain medications and how that medication is distributed. Another thing I can tell you is Hyder's just been through the roof. I mean, we've been full, you know, every minute. Normally, you know, if we have a need because, you know, respite can be normally scheduled. Okay? And that, that part's easy. You know, a lot of times when somebody's involved with the hospice, you know, with the hospice situation and the hospice knows that somebody's, you know, uh needs a respite for, because they've got a wedding coming up and and you know, somebody needs to um, you know, go to that wedding and they, they're the primary caregivers. You know, they'll know a month and, you know, they'll encourage us and and we'll actually calendar it. So that, you know, we keep the bed open. Uh but some of the um it's just been five, six and seven people straight through for the last two months. Um it's just not, it's, this is very not typical of, of the situation that we're in. Usually if I get a call or something comes up, I can usually get somebody in within a couple of hours. You know, a few hours as long as, particularly if they're on hospice, I can get them in within a couple of hours. It's just been um, um the last couple of months, it's just been really busy. Um I, I can't explain it. I mean, I'm happy for it. It, it, um you know, the staff's there, we're, we're wanna provide the service. Helps with the revenue, um but it's, it's um, and I, I don't have an answer.
Okay.
But you, you know, um
Just comes just, just one of those things.
It, it's just, I thought, you know, we used to have it like a week or so here and there and now all of a sudden, it's been almost like two months straight.
Okay.
When we've just been full all the time. You know, for this, for the half that's open. And it's not, you know, I know that you, you questioned me about opening the other half. I mean, there's no, nothing physically that prohibits us from doing that, but it's not economical. Um you know, it's.
You can't, you can't stab it twenty-four with just one.
Oh, that's my point. You know, and, and um it, it's just not, it, it, it's not feasible to open the other side at this point. You know, maybe sometime, you know, in our lifetimes, we'll see it, but right now, it's, it's, it just doesn't make any economic sense to do that. You know, to have a, a nurse and an aide for one person or two people, it, it doesn't make any sense. You know, you know, we end up, you know, splitting maybe, you know, four and four or four and five, but it's still it's like anything else, right? It runs most efficiently when it's full.
Right, yeah.
You know, financially efficiently when it's full.
Alrighty. Well, since my colleagues, I didn't have, don't have any old and new business. Ten twelve is questions or comments from the public, the agenda. We don't have anybody here, but I, I, I failed to, I see there's a Stephen Porter that's joined us. Stephen, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Under the statute, I have to ask you where you, you know, for your name and your address and where you're from that's adjoining us electronically. Uh so if you would do that, I appreciate it.
Sure. I'm Stephen Porter. I'm a news reporter with the Boston Globe. Uh I live in Newmarket.
Nice to, nice to hear from you again.
Thank you.
Any questions for us?
Questions, Stephen?
No, I was just eager to hear uh some of the discussion about the federal grants um that you were discussing earlier. But no, no specific questions at this point.
Alright. We, we have a written, uh Stephen, we have a written report that uh that Diane has prepared. If, if it's of any convenience to you, uh if you'd supply us an email, we'll be happy to email you that report. Uh which just basically mimics the verbal report that she gave. It's, it's up to you. I'm just making that offer.
Perfect. I, I appreciate that. I'll send you an email uh right now.
That would be great. And, and we'll have Diane email you that report.
Okay. So uh we've got fifteen minutes to go before we have to have another public hearing. Do you want to, we get up, stuff to talk about in the executive session, we'll come back.
We do. We have, I just like Chris, a briefy one.
Alright, Chair, most during a non-public session, discussing personnel and contract negotiations, the rule of the second, it requires room for teaching and featuring.
Yes.
Commissioner Lovitz, myself, and yes, the Board of Generalists, the Commissioner of the role of Jerran. There we go. Good to go. Okay, so we, we have to hold a hearing. You guys wanna?
Yeah.
Yeah, pop to the table. Come up to the table.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it. No, we don't get promoted anymore.
Alright, Donna, what do we need to do?
We need to have a progress public hearing. So I'm gonna read to you if you can open up the, did you open it while I was wandering around the table?
No, but I'll open in a second. I know I have a script I have to read, so.
Or I can read it if you open.
Okay. Why don't we do that? That's why I'm paying you the big bucks.
Big bucks.
Chair will open the, the public hearing on the progress of the childcare, project childcare improvements and the CDBG project. Okay, Donna?
Okay, first I have to say there's an informational document here and there, actually. Um so, I have to read to you. Community development block grant funds are available to municipalities through the New Hampshire Community Development Finance Authority. Up to five hundred thousand dollars annually is available for economic development projects. Up to five hundred thousand dollars for housing projects, up to five hundred thousand dollars for public facility projects, up to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in emergency funds and up to twenty-five thousand dollars per planning study grant. Our projects must directly benefit a majority of low and moderate income persons. This public hearing will present information on and accept public comment on the progress of the CDBG coronavirus-funded improvements to the Rochester Childcare Center, ninety-five Charles Street in Rochester. The heating and cooling work has been completed. Got some issues and we're fixing them. Electrical upgrades for the heat pumps are also complete. The remainder of the scope of work at this time, it said plumbing, ceilings, flooring, windows, lighting is in process. And I believe the flooring was completed yesterday.
Yes, it was.
And the ceiling was almost, I think tomorrow will be complete. And then the roofing is gonna have to wait till spring. And Cora, do you want to add to that at all?
Why don't you just introduce yourself to the.
Hi, I'm Coralyn Hoppy. I'm the Executive Director over at Rochester Childcare. Nice to meet you guys.
Nice to meet you. Alrighty, so uh do you have anything you want to add before I open the public hearing?
No.
Alright. Uh Chair, then we'll open, uh ask if there's any public comment regarding the CDBD grant. Do we have anybody else in cyberspace?
Everybody online, sir.
Okay. And since uh I don't see any members of the public here that have any questions, the chair will close the public hearing.
I have a question. I don't remember the public, what I am. It seems, are you satisfied with the pace at which it's moving? Cause it seems like it's gone on for, I know it's a question that came up earlier.
I brought it up earlier, I was saying, oh, it's been a couple of years.
It feels like it's taken forever.
Yeah. No, the first, the heating vendor has been really the issue, but since Adam's been doing everything else, it's been going much quicker.
Who's the heating vendor?
It was James. Um Lacey, I think it's LLC.
Yeah, we have some issues. He's been, he's been released.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause I was saying, I, I'd heard that there was, I just heard through, I hear, I hear all kinds of things. But I was just curious about it because I know it's been, been a while since I've walked through the facility and.
Yeah, it's, it's been a lot of work. So we're getting through.
But it's a good program and the city of Rochester, people of Rochester need it, so. So there's no motions required of us at this time. It's just we're required, you know, required to have this midstream hearing.
And if you have any more, well, if we don't know the story, but if you have any more potential projects, the next round would be, will be July, maybe.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe, I don't know. But keep that in mind if you have anything that you think.
They've been talking to me about putting a warming center up in Farmington, so. That would be, that would be the tourist.
I'd have to, Farmington would have to be um primarily low mod income just to do.
Yeah, Farmington, yeah, they're all.
I'm not sure their number. I'd have to check it. There's not a lot of community, the towns that are already low mod.
Right.
So many of them. But I, if you want to do something like that, we have to just check that number. But anything that they think of, both of you, if they come up with any ideas, or you guys, just send them along, you know? Find out if it's even feasible and then you can know if it's a thought or not.
Right.
You know?
There you go.
But thank you for this. That's all we have to do. Appreciate it. And appreciate you having late days.
Thank you. I hope it goes quicker.
Well, we have a seven o'clock. Oh, you have to hang out at budget meeting. Yeah, so.
Have fun with that.
Bye, Donna. There we go, yeah.
We've been around a long time.
Well, we were saying, I've worked with her for thirty-eight years.
Yeah, yeah. Cause I was, I was doing the CDBG program in Dover in the seventies and she had just.
She says she's been doing this for forty years.
Yeah, she, she had just come along. That's my first matter. It was, yeah, it was forty years ago.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
She knows how to do it and keep it going right and, and, you know, we, we're just a pass through in this and we have no right financial stake in this, but it, you know, as long as everything goes the way it should. And, and she's the perfect person to make sure that it goes the way it should.
Yeah.
Yeah, she has a lot of experience with this.
Alright, well, we'll start with that. So um anything else in the executive session we need to talk about?
No, sir.
Okay. We've got, so when, we're just recess this meeting until seven o'clock.
Thank you.
Hearing invited. The uh the government administrative thing you get, you know, take care of, you get some contract to sign.
Just start the sign.
Figure some stuff aside. Alright.